You're live.
You ready? Okay, good evening, welcome. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, January 7, 2021, our first official council meeting of the year. Thank you for joining us. If you're joining us from home, welcome. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Ms. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Jensen. Mayor Abu-Wasli.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Cadelia.
Here.
Mr. Sternad.
Here.
Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Atkins to the role of Mayor Pro Tem. So she'll be serving as Mayor Pro Tem for the next year. And Councilmember Jensen moves to the position of Deputy Mayor Pro Tems. Okay, our first item on the agenda is kind of an exciting presentation. I've been looking forward to this. We have the group of students who did the Splinters project with the Durachio debris. And they have a presentation for us this evening. I would just like to say, you know, when Leah called me sometime in October and said they were going to do this project, you know, I didn't know exactly what to expect, but they were so impressive in how they executed everything, took something negative and made something so positive out of it, gained a lot of attention across the state and other parts of the country and created excitement in the community in a time when we all needed some, something to smile about and some excitement, some hope. And I want to thank the city departments that partnered with them, especially the Parks Department for accommodating their needs, as well as Ryan with, and his crew from Public Service for providing the materials, which we had plenty of. And Jill from the Chamber, Amber, helped them learn how to do a media release. Nick Blue with Medco. You know, there was a lot of partnership in this project, but make no mistake, these students led every aspect of this and they did it all on their own and really did a great job at it. So I'll turn it over to the group. You can come up to the podium here and just speak into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Leah Allers. I'm here on behalf of Iowa Big Student Project Splinters. This project was started after the Durachio that hit August 10, 2020. We created this project to try and bring life back into our community with art and positivity. This project was created by six students, as they are all present here today in this meeting. Lexi King, Connor French, Lindsay Radek, Emma Gerlock, and Ella Schultz, under the advisory of Mark Mattson. We started this project off by calling Mayor Nick Abu-Wasli to get approval from the city and guidance into how we could create this positive turnout to help build our community and heal it back together.
Hi, my name is Lexi King. I'm a member of the Splinters project as well. And I just wanted to reiterate our appreciation for all of the support we were given, not only by all of the leaders in our community, but just the community as a whole. We got excellent involvement and were able to raise a lot of money to give back to our community. We wouldn't have been able to rent out the park space without the help of Mayor Nick Abu-Wasli and the Parks Department. And we're so grateful for all of the media and press that was pushed out by just everyone's support. And we're also so thankful that we were able to partner with Trees Forever, as they were a great partner and a super awesome organization that's going to help our community come back from this horrific event. And I would like to turn it over to Connor French to present our donation.
Hi, I'm Connor French. So I wanted to talk a little bit before we present the check, just about what is in the future. This project is not over yet. We have talked with Trees Forever and we are hoping to get a day or even a week, sometime around Earth Day, where we go out and plant the trees. And hopefully that would be something that would get the entire student body of Iowa Big involved in. I know that's something that we're all really looking forward to, is kind of seeing this, you know, what started as this like crazy idea actually turned into trees in our community. So we were really happy to raise about $25,000 and after auction fees, that was about $24,003. We wanted, this was just as much about supporting the artist as it was our community and the tree canopy. We were able to present the artist with a total of $9,553. And what is going to Trees Forever is $14,450.08. So we now want to present the check to Shannon.
Well, this is truly one of the most heartwarming things that's happened. And I can't say enough about you guys, you girls, and your incredible, you're just a brilliant bunch, and I think one of you could be president someday. You created so much excitement and attention to this project and just built so much excitement. It's just a great group. Thank you so much. So we've talked about planting. We're going to do a tree adoption for Marion this spring for Marion residents. And then we're going to plant at a couple of parks and maybe up Eighth Avenue. Those are the preliminary discussions with Seth Strasheim and Mike Semperich. But if you guys have a spot that you feel, you know, strongly, let us know. But the Iowa Big students had said they would come out, take one whole day off and come out and sort of do a blitz of planting and care. So we're so excited and can't thank you guys enough for this amazing project. And, and also using, I know you were looking to find ways to use all that wood that was down too. So I mean, it did all those things, just brilliant. Thank you, on behalf of Trees Forever and all those future trees.
I do wanted to say thank you, Marion, for being such a great partner and supporting Trees Forever in so many different ways. It's, it's great to be here in the city of Marion.
Well, we're happy that your headquarters is at Marion, Shannon. And I just wanted, for members of the public who may be watching, may not be aware of all the details. These students engaged chainsaw artists to create sculptures that were auctioned in an online auction. And we're able to raise all this money. So just to, for the record, to state what exactly the project was. And again, I want to thank everyone who worked to accommodate their requests and to help facilitate the project. And they did a fabulous job. So thank you again, ladies, and to you and your advisors. We really appreciate what you've done for Marion and hopefully we'll be back out to help you plant some trees in the spring. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on with our agenda, the consent agenda.
We have the public forum first.
Thanks for the reminder. At this time, we do have a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topics that are listed on the agenda, but which are not associated with a public hearing. If any members of the public have a comment regarding an item that is the subject of a public hearing, there will be time for comments at that time. So this is the time to speak on any matters that are not associated with the public hearing. Do we have any comments?
I do not have any comments.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And if any comments come in or requests to address council, come in while we're doing that, please let us know. Okay? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through A3, A5 through G2, which include resolutions 291, 229 through 29151.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Items A1 through G2, resolutions 29129 through 29151. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I ask for A4 to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Okay.
The motion I made, I did not include A4, Your Honor.
Oh, it does, your motion didn't include A4. I did, I missed that. I thought you said A, okay, so 29. You said A1 through G2. Anyway, so excluding A4 was your motion?
Yes, I.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so the motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented, but excluding item A4. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Would you like to make a motion to, regarding A4, and then we can have the discussion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the certified list for fire lieutenant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified list for fire lieutenant. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. I had asked for this item to be, because I had some further questions that I wanted, I guess, circle back around to visit with just a little bit for some clarity. I was doing some comparison against the lieutenant's list that was published back on December 3 of 2018 versus the one presented on January 5. And I appreciate the chief's information a little bit on this. I guess I had some further clarification I would like to try to just get. In taking a look at this, obviously, the list was removed from 14 to 10, eliminating four spots that are being considered for this lieutenant's list. My question is, is there's a couple of names that have peered back up on the 10 to be promoted to lieutenant, which in fact, they have already been promoted to lieutenant. I was looking for some more clarification on that, either by legal and/or by Chief Crable on that, for clarification. I know there's been some questioning amongst the council members about that as well, too. So could we get some clarification on that, please?
I would defer to Doug.
Yes.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Your Honor. Yes, there, actually today, legal actually contacted me about this item. And it appears we may need to do some investigation. So it may be best if the council remove the item, maybe remove the item from the agenda this evening.
Okay, so the recommendation of the chief is to table this item?
Table the item, that would be best.
Is it, does that answer your, it doesn't answer your question, but?
No, I think I've got the parameters around this, so I certainly am comfortable with that unless there's any other council members that have any other questions or concerns, I will make the motion to request a table of this item. But if there are any other questions?
Your Honor, if I could just make an additional comment on that as it relates to this particular item. It's an employment and issue, so that's handled by Lynch Dallas. So I would not be able to answer that question. This is not one of the, the projects that I would be working on. But I can ask Holly Corkery to reach out to you if you would like her to provide some additional context.
Okay, but as to the matter of tabling it, we're able to table it?
Yes, you can table it.
Sorry, go ahead. No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that there was, Chief, there is, please clarify if there is any sense of urgency on this matter to move it forward. But otherwise, is there any other concerns that would keep us from tabling this for further questioning?
There.
Second, Chief, please. We haven't had a second to the motion. Is there a second to the motion to table, and then we can have the discussion?
Okay. Yes, second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second to table this, this motion to approve the certified list of fire lieutenant. So now, please go ahead and?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll repeat the same question. Chief, is there any sense of urgency on this that would be of concern approving it of this evening?
No, there is no sense of urgency. And in fact, like I said, just at the 5 o'clock, I received an email from Holly Corkery of Lynch Dallas. And there may be some more questions that we need to answer. And we may be able to adjust the list. So I would, that's why I request that we table.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to table? Okay, then we'll vote on the motion to table. All those in favor of tabling the motion to approve the certified list of fire lieutenant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is tabled. Thank you. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu-Wasli's abstention as follows. This includes items E1 through F1, resolutions 29152 through 29154.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu-Wasli's extension. Items E1 through F2, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, and one abstention. I will pass it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Under the regular agenda, our first item under Administrative Services is a public hearing on Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Collins Road Extension Urban Renewal Area in connection with Legacy Manufacturing Project. Maybe we have a presentation?
Just a recap.
Please proceed.
Tuesday.
What's that?
Just a recap from Tuesday's discussion.
Yes, so the, the public hearing is now open and we'll have a short presentation.
This item is related to a development agreement that the city has with Medco Holding Company and the owners of the Legacy Manufacturing Facility in support of the development of the facility. For economic development purposes, the city's goal has always been to incentivize such commercial development locating in Marion. The Urban Renewal Area Amendment that authorized the project that was done in 2014 had a cap in it, and that cap underestimated the financing cost of the project. So today, we're holding a public hearing to raise that cap. This amendment is raise the cap to allow for that underestimated financing for the city to be able to honor the development agreement. We consulted with all impacted tax and jurisdictions, and we've heard no objection to this action.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. If there are any comments either in favor or in opposition to this measure, this is the time to make those comments known to the council. Do we have any, have we received any comments? Are we, are we receiving any comments right now?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, and ML, did we receive any comments outside the meeting?
I have not.
Okay. Wait just a few seconds, just to make sure no one is attempting to weigh in on this. Okay, we'll note for the public record that no comments were received, either in the meeting or outside the meeting. And we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Mr. Sternad.
Yes, Shannon, I move to approve resolution number 29155 to approve the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Collins Road Extension Urban Renewal Area in connection with Legacy Manufacturing Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29155, approving the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for Collins Road Extension Urban Renewal Area in connection with the Legacy Manufacturing Project. Discussions, questions for ML? Okay, seeing there are none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 29155, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion has been approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 29156, authorizing internal advance for funding of urban renewal project economic development incentive for Medco Holding Company from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $127,074.30.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29156, authorizing internal advance funding of urban renewal project economic development incentives from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $127,074.30. Discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved?
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 29157, approving fiscal year 2020 through 2021 operating budget transfers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29157, approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating budget transfers. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 29157, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 29158, approving economic development grant payment to Medco Holding Company in the amount of $127,074.30. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29158, approving economic development grant payment to Medco Holding Company in the amount of $127,074.30. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution 29157, please say aye. I'm sorry, 29158, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next item, I will pass the gavel or the meeting to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 29159, approving partial payment number six to Wendling Quarries Inc. for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of $328,268.36.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29159, approving partial payment number six to Wendling Quarries Incorporated for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of $328,268.36. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's been approved with one abstention. Back to the mayor.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 29160, approving partial payment number six to Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for Emergency Debris Removal Services in the amount of $396,194.11.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29160, approving the partial payment number six to Southern Disaster Recovery for Emergency Debris Removal in the amount of $396,194.11. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 29160, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the debris collection and vegetative reduction operations associated with the emergency waterway debris removal project. This includes resolutions number 29161 through 29163.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the debris collection and vegetative reduction operations associated with the emergency waterway debris removal project, including resolutions 29161 through 29163. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 29164, approving contract between the city of Marion and Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for the Emergency Waterway Debris Removal Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29164, approving contract between the city of Marion and Southern Disaster Recovery LLC for the Emergency Waterway Debris Removal Project. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution 29164, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next item under Parks, I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution 29165, approving contract with Point Builders LLC regarding the city's square park depot repairs in the amount of $72,475.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29165, approving contract with Point Builders LLC regarding the city's square park depot repairs in the amount of $72,475. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 29165, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. It's been approved with one abstention. Back to the mayor.
Mayor, I move to receive, file, discuss, and refer to the TAC Committee request for temporary library loading zone on Seventh Avenue on behalf of the Marion Public Library Board.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Cadelia, seconded by Councilmember Brandt, to receive, file, discuss, and refer to the Transportation Advisory Committee a request for a temporary library loading zone on Seventh Avenue. Discussion?
So if we, on Tuesday, we had talked about wanting to get some additional information from our uptown businesses. So would this be where we would table that, or would we go further and table a future motion?
Well, this is, this is receive, file, and refer to, to refer to TAC. So it would be?
Maybe E4?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I would think E3, because that would be concurring with TAC.
Let me see.
And their, their
Okay.
Recommendation.
Maybe E3 and E4.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're still on Councilmember Cadelia's motion for E1, receive and file, discuss and refer to TAC. receive and file, discuss and refer to TAC. Discussion on that one? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. This time, we have a public comment period regarding the library loading zone on Seventh Avenue. So we open the public comment period, and it just... Mr. Trey Harn, is this the one we discussed continuing it?
This is Mike. If you would like to keep this open for the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So we will just keep it, keep it open. So do we take public comments at this time?
I believe there are people on the line that would like to discuss, and I know we've received at least two letters that have been forwarded to City Council that the people read.
We received those. Okay, so lots of city clerk to...
Yeah, so I'll review the two comments that were previously received, and I have PowerPoint slides for them. So the first one is from Deborah Barron at 3550 Kimberly Court. Both of these comments were already forwarded to council.
Sure.
But she is in favor of the parking spots. And then the next one is Bob Hoyt, 2335 South 22nd Street. He was also in favor of the parking spots. And then I believe we have Jill Ackerman with the Chamber of Commerce who wishes to speak.
Jill, are you with us?
It's actually Brooke. Sorry, I'm using our joint recount. This is Brooke with Uptown Marion Main Street. I wanted to thank Councilman Atkins for bringing up the delay. We just really want to be able to talk with some of the businesses in person to make sure that, just to get their opinion on this, and also to maybe look at some alternative spaces in the area that might work better for a loading zone that would serve all of the businesses in the area.
Okay, any questions for Brooke while she's with us? Okay, is there anyone else?
No.
Okay, that's all the comments that we have. Okay. So we will continue the public comment period and move on to the next. Do we need a vote to continue it? No, we just keep it open. Okay. Move on to E3.
Your Honor, I move to receive, file, and concur with TAC report regarding a request for two short-term 10-minute parking spaces for the temporary Marion Public Library location at 1064 Seventh Avenue. This will be by the Marion Public Library Board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and concur with the TAC report regarding a request for two short-term 10-minute parking spaces for temporary Marion Public Library location. Discussion.
I do, I do just want to share that it's not that I'm opposed. I just would like to get additional information from our uptown businesses before making a decision. So I would advocate that we table it to get additional information before we make a final decision.
Okay. Are you interested in making the motion to table?
Yes, I didn't know if we needed to have more discussion before I make the motion or how. Nope.
You can go ahead and make the motion, and people, if people want to discuss the other one, they can defeat the motion to table, and then we can go back to discuss the main motion.
I make a motion to table the TAC report regarding two short-term 10-minute parking spaces for temporary Marion Public Library location at 1064 Seventh Avenue.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to table the motion to receive, file, and concur with the TAC report on the request for the two short-term parking spaces for the Marion Library temporary location. Now, discussion on the motion to table. So if people feel like we don't want to table it, you're free, this is when you speak up on that. Any discussion on tabling? Okay, seeing there's no discussion, we'll vote on the motion to table. All those in favor of tabling the motion to receive, file, discuss, and concur with the TAC report, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Okay, so the motion to table has been approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29166, approving two short-term 10-minute parking spaces for the temporary Marion Library, Public Library location at 1064 Seventh Avenue.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29166. But that, since we've tabled the other, does this motion even make sense at this point?
You would still want to table.
Okay, all right. So it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29166, approving the two short-term 10-minute parking spaces for the temporary Marion Public Library location. Discussion.
Your, your Honor, I would move to table this item for the very same reasons as the prior agenda item.
Your Honor, I have a question. I was wondering if I can ask Chief Mike Kitzmiller to come forward.
Well, let's see if there's a...
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table this Resolution Number 29166. So what, so this is a discussion on whether or not the table, so is that question relevant to that?
Sure. Well, I guess before we leave this, I'm a little confused because you're saying there's discussion, but then when we second it, we're moving on to the next resolution. So I want to make sure I get my question asked on the parking issue that I got questioned. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So my question is, I've taken two phone calls this week in reference to as we move forward with the request to inquire with the business owners in the Uptown District. Chief, can you just give us any light as to these permanent, I don't want to say permanent parked cars, but these two phone calls were directly related to vehicles that are parked beyond the two-hour maximum limits, and they feel that these vehicles are not being moved frequently enough, which does come back to the topic of, is this a permissible item? So I want to make sure that this is getting bundled into the same package before we move on. But can you just maybe shed to us that we are writing citations, or there have been no citations, or that maybe there's no concerns for that? I just want to make sure that we're getting that out in the public.
The citations for, for longer than the two hours, what happens is we go out and mark the tires, and then we go back, and usually by the time we go back, they're gone.
Okay.
So the citizens will see the cars parked there for two hours or three hours. They call us, we go out and mark the tires so we can start our clock, and then by the time we come back after two, they're gone.
Okay, good, thank you, and I appreciate it. I knew that was our policy and procedure. I just wanted to see if there was anything additional to that because that's exactly what I told these two particular individuals, that we do have a process for that. But again, just making, I didn't know if we had officially cited any of those vehicles because they were there beyond that two-hour limit. So I've personally driven down through there at odd hours of the day, and they are, you know, I know there's a lot of residents there that are parking, and they're going out there, and they're moving them frequently. So this taking two more spots away is going to be a question that's going to be coming up for the general public purpose, and I know there's been a lot of questions about business owners and employees using those same curbside spots that are vacant, you know, that are taking up those spots. So thank you, I just wanted to bring that to light during this particular moment here before we move on. Thank you.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
A related question, Chief, on that. So at such point in time, if we implement these two short-term spots for the library, the enforcement mechanism would essentially be the same as for a two-hour slot. If somebody pulls in, takes up a space, leave it there for an hour and a half, we would, our enforcement mechanism would be identical?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion regarding the motion to table Resolution 29166? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number, of tabling Resolution Number 29166, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 29167, approving contract and bond with Rapids Food Service regarding the Marion Library Building Project, BP 11A food service equipment in the amount of $54,135.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29167, proving the contract and bond with Rapids, Rapids Food Service, the Marion Library Project in the amount of $54,135. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 29167, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to remove from the table Resolution 29106, accepting bids and awarding contract to Coney, Inc. regarding the Marion Library Building Project, BP 14A conveying system, table December 17, 2020.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to remove from the table Resolution Number 29106, accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Coney, Inc. regarding the Marion Library Building Project. Discussion on, this is, this is on a motion to remove from the table. So that's the, that's the consideration here, whether or not you want to keep it on the table or remove it from the table, and then we'll vote on it. Discussion on, yes, go ahead, Renee?
Just because it's the public meeting, can we learn why we're untabling it now?
Who wants to, go ahead.
Your Honor, I can answer that. Originally, this was supposed to be accepted with the bigger package of bids that were accepted on December 17. But with this particular contract, they had sent a rider with it. That was not part of the original bid package, and so we wanted some additional time to work with them on that and make sure that we could come to an agreement, and we wouldn't need to rebid it, just because there were some items in the rider that left me concerned that if we added that in, it would give them an additional benefit that would not have been available to anyone else who bid on that particular project.
And, and we're good with it now? Do you feel comfortable?
The contract is not fully approved yet, but I have received some conversations back with them. So the actual contract itself will be approved at the next council meeting. But I am confident that we will be able to get an agreement going. The rider that they provided is a standard rider that they typically use, and they had included items that they feel, feel weren't adequately addressed in the contract. But I think we're, we're pretty close on it based on what I saw from them today.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. So with the next item, Kara, we would be accepting the bids and awarding the contract, but it's not really approving the final, the final form of the contract, just for everyone's understanding. Okay. So we're back to E6, the motion to remove from the, from the table 29106, which would place it on the floor so we could vote on it. Any discussion or comments on removing it from the table? All those in favor of removing from the table Resolution 29106, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29106, accepting bids and awarding contract to Coney, Inc. regarding the Marion Library Business Building Project, BP 14A conveying systems in the amount of $236,600, and this was tabled December 17, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29106, accepting bids and awarding contract to Coney, Inc. for the Marion Library Building Project conveyance and conveying systems in the amount of $236,600. Discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution 29106, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29168, approving change order number one with Boomerang regarding removal of existing housing foundation for the library site in the amount of $76,734.25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29168, approving change order number one with Boomerang regarding removal of existing housing foundation for the library site in the amount of $76,734.25. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 29168, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29169, approving change order number one with Central State's Concrete regarding removal of existing, existing housing foundation for the library site in the amount of $1,918.37.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29169, approving change order number one with Central State's Concrete regarding removing, removal of the existing housing foundation for the library site in the amount of $1,918.37. Discussion. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, is, is this the part of the same foundation that was just authorized in the prior resolution? Or is this a different foundation that needs to be dealt with?
Yes, Your Honor, so the first one was for Boomerang to actually remove the foundations and the utility lines. E9 is actually to pour the patches back for the water services because we need to remove those all the way back to the water main itself so that we don't have a issue in the future if someone were to hit the live water service. So they are for the same project, just different components of it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike.
Any additional questions on that? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 29169, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 20-13, approving an amendment to Section 176.51 Table 6 and 176.51 Table 7 regarding permitted uses within the BR Business Regional and OS Office Services zoning districts. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve an amendment to Section 176.51 Table 6 and 176.51 Table 7 regarding permitted uses in the Business Regional and Office Service Zoning District. This is the final consideration. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the final consideration of Ordinance Number 20-13, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 20-15, approving an update to the Marion zoning map for property located within City Council Ward 2, which includes precincts 5, 6, and 7. Final consideration.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 20-15, approving an update to the Marion zoning map for the property located within City Council Ward 2, including precincts 5, 6, and 7. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the final consideration of Ordinance Number 20-15, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. This time, we have a public hearing regarding a request to vacate an alley located east of 22nd Street between Fourth and Fifth Avenues. We have a presentation from Mr. Trey Harn.
Yes, the, as I had mentioned at the work session on Tuesday, we've, we've, as, as we started down the road of vacating this, it was brought to our attention that, that we, we don't actually do title opinions of property as we go through the process. And it was brought to our attention that, by the county, that we may, we may not actually own the property for the vacation sale, and at this point, we're really not exactly sure who owns the property 100%. So at this point, I think we'd, we'd like to continue the hearing and, and allow us to research that a little bit more. I, I know that Ms. Bullerben, from the legal side, has sent some emails today. sent some emails today. I don't know if there was anything more from your research.
No, I've, I've gone back as far as I can on the parcels around it, and, um, what the county basically is telling me is that they have no record. So if this was an alley or is still an alley, they just don't have a record of that. But they also don't have a record of anyone owning this parcel. So according to the county, it's just kind of an unowned parcel sitting out there doing nothing. So essentially, at this point in time, we need to figure out what that parcel is, if it is alley, if it's previously vacated alley that was just never then sold, or if that is just a chunk of property that at some point back before they had all the technology we have and they could see really easily on a map, it just got missed in a legal description somewhere. Um, we need to figure out what it is and who owns it. And at that point, we would either, if it's an alley, we would be able to vacate it. If it's not an alley, we could do a, um, in, in action to essentially declare abandoned property, and then we could sell it at that point in time. But without knowing that it is alley, we can't really vacate it. And it, it may be already vacated alley, and we can skip that step and go forward. So um, I will need to contact, um, one of the abstract companies in town to get a title search on that.
Okay, so you've, you've requested that we continue the public hearing, and, uh, do you know, have we received any comments?
No, we have, we have not received any comments regarding it that I'm, that I'm aware of.
I have not received any either.
Okay, so to date, we haven't received comments. We'll continue the public hearing, and we'll allow you to keep doing your investigation and come back, revisit it, and okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Tom before we move on? Okay. All right, for the next set of items, I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Protem.
Okay, we have another public hearing regarding amendment to the Marion Future Land Use Map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from public semi-public to multifamily residential, a rezoning request from R two medium density, single family residential to PDR Plan Development Residential, and a preliminary site development plan for property located at the northeast corner of Thirty-First Street and Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Mr. Trey Harn?
Uh, yes, um, so this is, uh, tonight we're holding a public hearing, uh, for the Green Park apartment living, um, project. As, as the council will recall, we, we reviewed this in December. Um, I noted on Tuesday that we had a publication, uh, issue that was, uh, that we, uh, found out upon, uh, the conclusion of the public hearing and, and, and the resolutions approving, uh, authorization of the land use plan, preliminary site development plan, and also the rezoning. Um, we, we've since, uh, rescinded those resolutions and brought it back just to kind of start the process over. And so we did renotice the neighborhood, um, about a hundred and fifty, uh, plus notices went to area residents. I believe there's an article in the newspaper today relative to this, this project. And we've reviewed it in the past. I wasn't planning to walk through the entire staff report or the information, but I certainly would be available for questions or comments. I, I will, uh, point out be-between the last meetings and this meeting, uh, we've had two correspondents. I think the council has received, uh, both of those. Uh, one, uh, was from the Hickory Haven Estates folks, and they had received, they had submitted a petition as a part of the project. I think we addressed those issues at the meeting. I think what they're wanting is a written response, and I will do that um, to them. Their major issues were, uh, water pressure in the area, and then I believe the other one was, uh, traffic or stormwater, stormwater. So physical water infrastructure and pressure that may be an issue. Uh, in speaking with the water department, that's, that shouldn't be a concern, and the water pressure issue would likely be for the apartments, and they would have to handle that internally. Stormwater, all of the, uh, all of the, uh, stormwater plans for this project have been reviewed and are consistent with the city's policy for stormwater management. And there is an ample amount of green space as it relates to the project. Um, there was another email that was just received today, uh, Jennifer, uh, uh, Egel, I believe is how you would say that name. Her concerns were particularly related to traffic, um, uh, was the first concern. And, and as we had spoke at the last public hearing when we were discussing this, uh, the, in a, in a, in a quick evaluation of the project, um, it was determined that there would actually be a net uh, loss in daily tricks, trips based on a trip generation model or trip generation manuals that we use to, to detect and identify, um, transportation trips or land use trips on a, uh, on a, on the basis of what they, how big they are, um, for a rec center, or how many units are in an apartment building. So it was pretty close, actually, um, overall on the number of trips. Um, so there really wasn't a, a, a huge concern or desire from the engineering folks to, uh, go to a full-blown traffic engineering study at this point. The other concern, um, that was noted in the email was, or just questions were, who are the clients of the apartments? Um, uh, it is a workforce housing tax credit project, so there are some limitations on, uh, uh, how much they can spend on the units to keep the affordability, uh, down. It is, uh, it is a market rate project, though it's not income-based. Um, and it's not a senior project either, so it's just, uh, a standard, uh, everyday market-based, uh, residential apartment building. And there's three of them, of course. And then, um, there was a concern with the, with the notices, and I, and I, I know every time we do a public notice, we never uh, can, can accomplish notifying everyone in the manner upon which everybody, I think, wants, uh, notice. Uh, we did send out, like I said, for this redo of the, of the public hearing. Um, it was, it was actually a hundred and seventy-six notices went out to the neighborhood surrounding. We actually increased that above and beyond. We've been doing that on a regular basis now with our public hearings to kind of physical boundaries. We, we're only required to go out to two hundred and fifty feet, but we do uh, kind of stretch that, um, quite a bit. Um, and there was a couple of questions relative to why it wasn't in the paper before, and, and, you know, we, we don't have any control over that. We do the legal requirements, and then we try to promote it uh, where we can. We talked about this one on several occasions, so, um, I really don't see any, uh, necessity in, in, um, continuing to, uh, I guess, go through the staff report, but those were the concerns that were, were provided to us, um, by, uh, Ms. E, Egel. Um, and if, I guess with that, if there's questions or comments regarding to that, I can, I can answer them. Or if someone from the public has a question on the, on this, I'd certainly, um, can handle those two as well.
Okay, let's see if we've got anybody, uh, on to speak for or against the project.
Uh, so we received three comments ahead of the meeting. Um, Tom mentioned two, but we'll go through them again. The first one was from the Hickory Haven Estates Association, um, with concerns about the project. Another comment received by Sarah Fatma at fourteen ninety-five twenty ninth street, um, spoke in opposition of the development. And then Jennifer Eagle uh, with spoken opposition. And then we also on the call have Leon Powelson at nineteen seventy-five thirty-first street.
Hello?
Hello, Leon?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I, I heard, or, go ahead.
I was, I just didn't know if you knew you could start talking, so please share with us, uh, your comments.
I heard, uh, the one gentleman say that, uh, through his models, there would be reduced traffic. Well, if there's, if this unit has a hundred and fifty units, and, um, so that's a hundred and fifty families, uh, traffic will not go down on Thirty-First Street. Right now, in the morning rush hour, Thirty-First Street is pretty busy. I, I have a hard time, I have a hard time getting out of my driveway. And then there has been a case, there has been a wreck in my driveway where we have backed out. And, uh, we've had damage to our cars. So, uh, during the normal days, there is, you know, it's pretty light, but in the morning and evening, there's a lot of traffic on this road, Thirty-First Street.
Okay, thank you.
And and this seems like a pretty big, big unit that's, you know, out of, out of place. You know, you've got residential housing, and suddenly you've got, this is, this is a massive project.
Okay, thank you. I, I think, just to clarify what we had heard earlier, um, Tom, you had said it was a net zero effect, right? It wouldn't be a decrease in traffic during your presentation? Did you say a net zero effect?
So, um, if you, if you work off of the Institute of Transportation's engineer trip, trip generation manual, it's a book literally by this thick, it has every use under the sun. And they, uh, go through iterations to determine trip generation based on the square footage of, of certain buildings and uses, um, and apartments, and they, like every land use category possible. And using that manual just to kind of understand if there isn't, and like, obviously, if there was a big gap or created by an increase or decrease or, or some nature, we'd want to see a, a full-blown transportation study done to know the impact exactly. Um, as we asked the engineer to provide us the data that would tell us that we don't need to proceed in that manner. And in doing so, um, what we found is that weekday total trips for, uh, recreational community center, eight hundred and sixty-five, uh, for a multifamily housing mid-rise is eight hundred. So it's, it says, uh, less than sixty-five trips, uh, on a weekday, average weekday. It does show that there may be uh, five extra trips here in, in PM, PM peak time. So coming home from work, you may have, uh, a couple more trips. But, uh, um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was, I actually read that wrong. It would be, there's more trips for PM and AM peak time for both, uh, the rec center versus the multifamily. So that's, that's the manual that we went off of. Obviously, when you're talking five less or twenty-one less, it's not, that's not a significant number that would justify, and especially when it's in a negative fashion that we would want to see and have a full-blown transportation study done. We recognize that the intersection is busy, but to, to say that the new use would contribute to the busyness of the intersection to the point where we need more modeling done, just that, it just doesn't, uh, identify that in what we've received.
Okay, thank you. Do we have others waiting to make comments?
I have not received any others.
Okay, so no other comments, Tom, you've received either?
No.
Okay. All right, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your honor, I move to approve Resolution number two nine one seven zero, approving an amendment to the future land use map of the Marion Comp Plan from public semi-public to multifamily residential for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue. This is, um, Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, um, to approve Resolution number two nine one seven zero, approving amendment to the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from public semi-public to multifamily residential for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Discussion? Yes?
I have two questions, um, probably both for Tom. Um, the first is the housing study that we had done a couple of years ago. Will this, um, project help us in the areas where we were deficient in any way? On the, the type of the size and the, um, affordability aspect?
Uh, yes, yes, this does address, um, uh, uh, specific areas of the housing, uh, impact analysis that we've done. Um, so workforce housing, it's, it's going to be, uh, this is in high-end housing, and it's, and it's not income restricted from affordability stand, standpoint. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's middle-income, um, market rate, uh, apartment buildings.
Okay, great. And then secondly, the, um, the modeling that was done with this building in terms of the traffic patterns, was that looking at the current modeling or the future modeling, given the construction changes that we're going to make in that area on Thirty-First and whatever that little road by, just Jimmy John's is?
So those, the way that we reviewed this, and, and Mike can probably help me out a little bit. The, the way that we reviewed this was just based on the, the use that is currently there versus the use that would be proposed. So current rec center versus the, um, uh, apartment buildings, hundred and forty-seven units. And so understanding what the, the traffic, if it was going to show a net increase, we would have wanted to see a much more detailed traffic analysis because it's not showing an increase, uh, the determination is that it's, it's, it's not going to contribute to or cause more transportation issues in the vicinity. So we did, we didn't actually model it and, and take a look at the traffic patterns and the potential shifts in traffic with the improvements to Thirty-Fifth and, and, uh,
Because the numbers didn't trigger a more in-depth, is that why?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Others? Yes, Grant?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, Tom, when you say market rate, I, I didn't pull up, uh, the, uh, memos to reconfirm this, but if I recall correctly, it was nominally twelve hundred dollars a month. It, do you happen to recall, or have?
Um, I, I don't recall right offhand, um.
I, I guess, I, I remember kind of reacting to that number, and maybe it's that order of magnitude of monthly rent, and I was just kind of thinking about, gee, that's, uh, house payment.
Yeah.
You're showing your age, Paulson.
At any rate, okay, uh, it, it, don't, don't worry about that. I think it was in that order of magnitude, and I was just searching around to try to confirm what market rate might connotate, so.
Okay, anybody else? All right, um, all those in favor of Resolution number two nine one seven zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Resolution two nine one seven zero has been approved, uh, with one abstention.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution number two zero dash one four, approving the rezoning request from R two medium-density, single-family residential to PDR Plan Developmental Residential to property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue. This will be Green Park Apartment Living LLC for initial consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty dash fourteen, approving the rezoning request from R two medium-density, single-family residential to PDR Plan Development Residential for property located at thirty-one hundred Tenth Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Initial consideration. Discussion? Okay. Yes, Grant?
So just, just perhaps for the record and for clarity of anybody in the listening audience, what we have done here is we have approved a change to our future land use map. And we have, are about, perhaps, to change the zoning of this specific parcel. So I'm, what all I'm trying to do is make sure everybody understands what we're, what we're moving through here. Uh, there is a future item on the agenda that, um, will address the specific site development. So is that, am I, is that correct, Tom? Am I thinking of that in the right way?
Yes, that is, that is correct. So we have a long, a long-range plan that's a part of the city's overall comprehensive plan. Um, and, uh, when the, when we go to rezone property, which is the physical, um, or the, the, the actual rezoning of the property, which provides for the use to be a permitted use in the zoning district, it has to correspond with the city's comprehensive plan. So this was previously a public use property by virtue of being a nonprofit and being the YMCA. So we had to change it to, uh, they had to request a change for the land use category, which amends this, the comp plan, and then the zoning would follow. Um, just quickly, the the change to the multifamily residential provides the opportunity for, uh, the MR one, MR two zoning district classifications, which are the multifamily districts, um, and the PDR. Um, what in the ordinance is, there's different densities that are allowed for each of those. So M, M one has a density allotment, which is less than the M two. M two goes to twenty units per acre. Anything over twenty units per acre goes to plan development. Just because at that scale, we want to make sure that we have a full understanding of exactly what's going on that piece. We have the public notice. The neighborhood will know. That's why we, at the final item is a preliminary site development plan, which then we can illustrate to everybody what's being proposed as a part of the rezoning. So the, the land use plan needed amendment, the rezoning So the, the land use plan needed amendment, the rezoning needs to occur. There's actually three readings of the ordinance. So there'll be two more readings of the ordinance. The preliminary site development plan is on the agenda, so you can see what's being proposed. At the third consideration for the rezoning, we will, we will likely approve the final site development plan, which would provide them the opportunity to get a building permit and start construction. So.
Thank, thanks for that.
Yep, no problem.
Explanation of our process here, thank you.
Was very helpful, thank you. Other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Nope, let me back up. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 20-14, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, Ordinance Number 20-14 has been approved with one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29171, approving the Greens Park Apartment Living Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located at 3100 10th Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29171, approving the Green Park Apartment Living Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located at 3100 10th Avenue, Green Park Apartment Living LLC. Discussion, yes, Grant?
So based on the concerns that have been received through public commentary, principally, there was concern about the, the traffic levels, water pressure, and water runoff. And I, I, I think technically, those have all been effectively addressed, and there's no concerns with, with disadvantageous traffic, water pressure, or, or runoff. So the other concern that I, I think just came up with the correspondence that we received here for this meeting was concerning the size and volume of the structures to be built. And I just want to be on record, that was my original concern with this project, given that it is immediately adjacent to single-family residential homes. And so that one, I don't know that there's any effective resolution for that in terms of a technical adjustment.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution, approving Resolution Number 29171, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Resolution Number 29171 has been approved with one abstention. I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a public comment section, which is time set aside for comments from the public on any item that was not under the, covered under the agenda this, this evening. This can be comments on any item, any topic. Do we have anyone who has asked to address the council?
Yes, we have Randy Lucor with All-Stores Storage.
Okay. Mr. Lucor, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Welcome, please go ahead.
Thank you for taking the time to hear my comments. This is in regards to things I have previously commented on before at other meetings. On Tuesday, January 5th, Tom Trahern made a presentation to the council on non-conforming properties because of issues Seth Green and I have previously brought up during public comments. The very first slide of the presentation was concerning to me. It stated that the purpose of creating non-conforming properties was for those businesses to be phased out over time and not be allowed to develop or redevelop in those areas. From all the examples I have seen, every property which has been changed to non-conforming already, or is proposed to be changed to non-conforming, has built or purchased their businesses or properties by following all current laws and regulations. For city, for the city to move the goalposts on these businesses after significant investments have been made should not be allowed. In Tom's presentation, he brought up the Takings Clause of the Fifth Amendment, which is relevant in this conversation. The United, in the United States, First Dickinson, 331 U.S., 745, in 1947, the Supreme Court held that even if the government does not physically seize private property, the action is still a taking. When inroads are made upon the, an owner's use of it, of it to an extent that, as between private parties, a servitude has been acquired either by an agreement or in the course of time. If the city's plan goes forward as currently intended, I would argue that in action, the action would constitute a taking. One of the council members asked a great question after the presentation about a fictational auto sales lot. This auto sales lot purchased a multi-acre, a multi-acre lot, and had been built out in one phase of its plan on one acre. And you would like to move on to the second phase. If this were passed as written, he would not be allowed to expand his property. This is a great example of how this plan could drive businesses out of business by removing avenues for growth and expansion. It is also, it was also asked if this change could affect property values, which would be turned into non-conforming properties. The answer is a resounding yes. As someone who is looking to expand my business to additional properties, seeing a place having a label "non-conforming", we're not only bringing a lower price tag, but I would avoid even considering purchasing the property at all. This thins the pool of potential buyers and would dramatically affect the sale price of the property. When you start a small business, it takes significant planning, and sometimes years of building equity in your property to be able to afford future expansion and improvements. For business owner, their business is a substantial part of their retirement plan. This plan takes years, if not decades, to see the fruition. These plans grow and evolve over time, which in turn typically means jobs from their four community members. To go and change zoning on property owners simply because you don't like the look of their legally-built and operated properties should not be allowed. There are many avenues that can be used in redevelopment or innovations of, of existing properties. If a property is a nuisance property because it has become too rundown, use that portion of the code to have it brought into compliance. There could be a self-supporting municipal improvement district to improve the areas that comprise the city, I'm sorry, the areas the city would like to see renovated in order to have an updated look. There's another option that I'm not personally in favor of in the form of property tax incentives on the improvements that are done to properties. If the goal is truly the beautification of Marion, then let us work together on a plan with existing property owners to improve their properties and businesses for the betterment of everyone, as opposed to adopting a plan with the intention of driving them out of their current locations in favor of newer types of developments. I'd like to see a plan that allows existing property owners to continue in their preferred line of business for as long as they please without any need to ask for special permission from planning and zoning or from the zoning board of adjustments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lucor. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Lucor? Okay, all right. Anyone else?
I have no other comments.
Okay, we'll move on to council comments.
There we go. Sorry, wanted to commend the students from Iowa Big. That's a pretty big deal, the project that they decided to, to accomplish here in Marion, and just proud of those students. So wanted to congratulate them again, and how exciting that they had worked with Trees Forever. And secondly, I just wanted to highlight that here on City Council, I've really enjoyed in the last year and a half, I guess, working with the, the team that I'm with and, and recognizing at times that we don't always see things kind of eye to eye. I think that we've had some great discussions where maybe I might be on one side and they might be on the other. But we've always found a way to sort of move past that and continue to do good work for the city and our, and our residents and respect one another. And, and I just really commend my colleagues for modeling that kind of discussion and, and doing the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing, Your Honor, thank you. Well, Renee?
Yes, I think the thing I would just offer, and I, I think it interfaces with what Colette just said. For my time on council, albeit shorter than the rest of my colleagues, I've really appreciated the collaboration, the interface, the discussion, and at times, the debate and disagreement. And what the feature of that is, is that through that discourse, we come to an understanding of the, the deeper fabric of, you know, what we're thinking about, what we're worried about. And so if I fast-forward to yesterday, you know, I was greatly troubled by the occurrences in Washington, D.C. And I am thankful that if our means of working together allows us to achieve understandings, I'm very confident that we would not have an occurrence such as that in Marion. And I really hope we've started the Racial Equity Committee, sorry, I messed up the title. There have been other proactive actions that the city has taken to engage our residents and to, to really understand what they're feeling. And so as we move forward over this next year, I really will be looking for opportunity to amplify, to make more effective our communications with our, with our constituency because we serve them, it's not the other way around. So there's kind of a composite thought I had stimulated from yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. We certainly have come a long ways in terms of that coming, our communications with, with residents and hearing from them and sharing information with them. We have so many different ways that we do that, but we can always do better. And we're always looking for ways to do better. And you're right, we do work for them. And so they have a right to know what they need to know and what they'd like to know. And any, any opportunities we have to improve how we do things, we should always look at them and set the standard and the example. And I think we do set the standard in lots of ways as a city, as an organization, as a team. And we're beginning a new year and a new decade. And there's always great hope that comes with, with starting something new, a new, a new year. And I look forward to working with everyone as a team, as council, all of our, our great staff, our hard-working staff. Every team member is important and is valuable. And we all have a role to play and a positive impact that we can make on the outcome and on, on how we serve our city and provide the great quality of life and services that, you know, that, that we aim to provide. So thank you. And with that, we will move on to the closed session.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters, city manager performance evaluation, as permitted under Section 21.51I of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding personal matters, as permitted under Section 21.51I of the Code of Iowa. We will ask if we have the city manager's approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a legal statement?
Yes, Your Honor, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section 25.51I.
Thank you. Okay, may we have the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Thank you, we're adjourned to closed session.